The committee. So we need a chair on vice chair.
I make a motion to appoint Demetrius Chair.
I'll set this up.
You actually have a board?
Mm hmm.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
But he is just not.
There's a lot of things.
Yeah. Any other nominations?
Yeah, we're all jumping on that. Why ruin a good thing?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Right. You're meeting Demetrius.
All right, any nominations for the vice chair?
I would like to make a motion to nominate Dan Regan as vice chair.
One of me.
Call the chairman. Well, that was sweet.
I'm trying to making sure it's not.
Oh, yeah. Thank you.
You're feeling good.
Yes.
Welcome.
Thank you.
All right, so there's a nomination for Dan Regan. Any discussion?
How about a second?
Oh, about a second.
I'll second.
I'm rusty. Any discussion? Would you accept? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, Dan Regan is vice chair. Welcome.
Thank you.
So.
Before we move along.
Yeah.
New members that maybe.
Oh, yes. I'm sorry.
I was gonna say that, thank you.
To me, it's very boring. It's numbers, true. So. Do you introduce everybody?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. So I'm doing this round, I've been the chair now for my. Third year. Third year. And on the budget committee for like roughly five. I'm an engineer, I like numbers, that's why everybody keeps picking me every year. Because I like my spreadsheet. And. What else? I've been in Enfield since two thousand. That is living on George Silver.
I think we can bet another person.
Yes.
Yeah. His room here.
Oh, here, I'll be.
I'm John Klug, I'm chair of the Enfield Select Board and I'm the Select Board's representative to the Budget Committee. I've been on the Select Board fifteen years, I've also served on the Planning Board and on the zoning board. ZBA, excuse me. And I live on off Klug Road in Enfield.
Should we call this like board meeting, Dora?
Mm hmm.
We can, we can introduce ourselves first and then we can, before we get into any business.
Just relax, even.
I'm Tracy Young, I'm also on the Select Board, I'm the vice chair. And I am John's alternate to this committee. And I am also the chair of the Capital Improvement Program Committee.
Jane Plumlee. I've been on the Budget Committee, this is my second term now, but I was on it years and years ago. I've been on the Planning Board, chairman of the Recreation Park Committee when we developed that area. I brought up four kids in town, who you know what. For maybe on. And I do a lot in the community if I'm able to.
I'm Shirley Green and I've been on the Budget Committee since early two thousands. And several other committees in town.
Close them all.
Ed Morris, Town Manager, I've been here over three and a half years.
Alisa Bonnet-Lineoff, I'm the Assistant Town Manager, I've been with the town since nineteen eighty nine, been in my position since, say, twenty seventeen.
I'm Alice Kennedy, I'm a member of the Select Board, I've been a member since twenty twenty three and I've lived in Enfield since twenty eighteen.
Hi, I'm Dan Regan, I am a member of the Budget Committee, the Chair of the Zoning Board and on the CIP Committee with my first meeting last night, that was very interesting. And welcome.
Eric Russell, member of the Select Board, spent time on the Budget Committee before that, on the Planning Board.
I'm Kate Plumlee Stewart, I'm in my third term and I'm gonna say that because I can't remember how long I've been on the Select Board. I've sat, I've held seats on the Budget Committee in the past as a Select Board rep, Planning Board, I'm currently the rep to Conservation and that's all I can.
Jean Patton, I'm on my.
Her.
Oh, well, I wasn't sure, I thought we were introducing ourselves to her first. Go ahead, Kristen.
I'm Kristen Bean, I'm brand new to the Budget Committee, I've lived in Enfield for probably the past eleven years now and I'm raising two little kids here.
Jean Patton, I, this is my second stint on the Budget Committee and I've been on a variety of others, currently on the Solid Waste Committee. I think everyone needs to take a trip to the transfer station for two hours, that's what I have to say, those guys are amazing, but anyways, welcome. Thank you.
I'm Jim Vicket, I've been on the Budget Committee for a couple of years now. I guess I was landing in Enfield about ten years ago and when I finished my house two years ago, I started paying attention to something besides building.
You're gonna have lots of questions. Everybody, I think Dan's still pretty new, Dave's pretty new, but a lot of other people are so used to it, we may just go ramble on, just interrupt and ask questions, don't feel like.
I was actually going to ask if I could just compile my questions and eventually, what do you need? After, yeah, that's fine.
Well, and I will say we're always available at the town office if you want to come sit down and help understand, Demetrius is real good at explaining some of those things.
Yeah, well, I feel like after this workshop, I'll also have a lot of questions.
All right. Opening Select Board meeting?
Okay, I'd like to open this meeting of the Select Board, held jointly with the Budget Committee on Thursday, August twenty eighth, twenty twenty five.
Can I make a suggestion, we switch to the order? And we look at budget priorities first and then do the review of where we are in twenty twenty five?
Sure, however you want to do it.
I think that would be helpful as we go through the twenty twenty five review, we have a sense for what we think priorities are.
Okay, yeah, twenty twenty five, you're gonna be a pretty high level overview too.
Yeah.
That's fine.
Are you talking to priorities? You're talking priorities.
No, this is a time for the Budget Committee and Select Board to talk, at the last Select Board meeting, they did talk to the Select Board about priorities, so they've had a little bit of a discussion. But I think this is just a really good time for the Budget Committee and Select Board to talk about their, their priorities for the upcoming year, I can, I can tell you kind of the direction I've already given. My department heads going into this year, but.
Yeah, let's start there.
Let's start there.
Yeah, and then we can have, then we can have the Select Board to their view and then the Budget Committee will.
And my part will be pretty short and sweet, like we've talked the last few years, I directed my department heads to put together a budget. Keeping costs as low as possible, I did not ask them to level fund, but I asked them to, to keep in line with the services that they've done now, so any cost increases to services would be reflected in the budget, but. Not to be adding any extra projects or anything this year, we had a, a pretty good little discussion about, you know, we've had the two big building projects. Like Saturday Park, which is not funded through taxes, but all these different projects going on for the last few years and pretty much said we need to, we need to take a time to take a breath. Slow down a little, look at what we have, we definitely have and we'll talk about this a little bit, but. You know, when I came on three and a half years ago, it was introduce the buildings and full speed ahead since then, working on those buildings, so it's time to really. Step back, look at some procedures, look at some internal control stuff, just different things we need to do to, to make the organization better as a whole. So pretty much it was, you know, let's own what we need to fund. We'll talk about it as we get a little bit deeper in, but this was the first year in twenty twenty five that I was able to do part of that rolling compensation study that we talked about. I'll show those numbers when we get to the compensation talk, but we're, I think it's gonna work, there's a few adjustments, I did DPW that we need to do, but they're, they're minor compared to what we've had to do in the past and it. I think it shows that we're, we're doing a lot better job keeping up and if we do this review every few years, we'll stay on top of that, so. I did find a good company and we got it done really cheaply and I was able to just put it into this year's budget. But yeah, really just. Hold the line, let's, let's go. I mean, even outside the building projects, we've. Retaved, we, you know, Hughes Park, we did all the sidewalks downtown, there's just been a ton of projects we've been doing the last few years, so. Time to slow down a little bit, look at where we're at. Let the dust settle from all these projects we've done, so that's, that's kind of what they've been charged with, I should be getting their stuff back. Pretty much right now, I asked for it to be due to me next week and I looked through the budget worksheet that we're working on yesterday and a lot of them are already in and ready. DPW, police, public safety, most, all of those are in, so the, the big stuff's in there and I'll start going through the budget next week and. I guess whittling down a little bit and having those conversations.
Yeah, do you feel like we're at risk of deferring any maintenance as a result of having to kind of put the brakes on over the last couple of years?
I don't think so and I don't really want to say we haven't slowed down last year, but we really haven't put the brakes on, we've been.
Yeah.
Moving forward, I actually think our road maintenance has increased from what we were doing before, I think we're doing a really good job at road maintenance.
Yeah.
Jeremy and I may have him come in here and give you guys a little sneak on what we do, but. He's really big, I worked with him in Claremont, many of you don't know, and he's really, really big on, let's get it paved and then let's do the preventative maintenance, let's crack seal, let's do the stuff we need to do to make these roads last and. I think you'll really start seeing this and I'm starting to see it now that we're. We're gonna turn that corner, we've seen it, I think they started before Jeremy came on, but on the gravel roads, we put good material, not just putting material. You know, we've been putting chemicals on when we grade, doing certain things and it really is making our roads stand up a lot better than other people's roads when we get into. And then, just like anything else on your house and our stuff, if you do that preventative maintenance, you don't have those big, huge maintenance projects to do, so.
Yeah.
That's really what we're, we're working towards and I think we're, we're hitting the stride, so I don't, I don't see a lot of deferred maintenance. The place we had a lot of deferred maintenance was in the, the buildings for a long time and now that we just redid two new ones, we've done some insulation and other maintenance on this building lately and. You know, now that we're in the new ones, we need to stay on top of those, we can put a little bit of concerted effort into this building if we need to in the community building, but. We've al, we've also done that over the past couple of years, we did refinish the floor, we redid the ramp, we did a lot of stuff at the community building as well, so. We've been doing a lot the last few years and.
Yeah, yeah, thank you.
So it's time to step back and look and if we see something that needs to be done, we'll figure out a way to, to get it done, but I think it's a time to not be adding a lot of projects to the project.
Ed, do we still have a maintenance type person that sort of tracks what needs to, I mean, as far as like buildings and whatnot?
We do, we have a facilities person and we're watching that close, though the one thing that they do do that takes a lot of their time is they, they're also our janitor at the same time for all of the buildings.
Oh.
So we've never really differentiated that, I know some people wanted to have two different people, we had a contract janitorial service of, for a long time and we've had different ones, so they just never seemed to work out, but. You know, one of them, we had Alisa tell me the other day, there's a lot of stuff just started disappearing from the buildings and so it's, no, you need to go and then we hire another one and it's like, did you even come here? And so they're kind of tough, I'm sure it's which company you find, if you find a good one, you stay with them, but Dan does a really good job of. Basic cleanup, I'll call it, you know, we still need to run around and dust every once in a while or something, but vacuuming, the carpets mopping, keeping trash clean, he does a really good job and then he also does. Most of our building maintenance, if it's small stuff, he'll do it on himself, if not, they're coordinating people to come in to get it done. So I think that's good, we'll continue watching that over the, the next couple of years and keep you guys apprised of whether we need something else, but. These, these new buildings are also very technologically advanced, which is good and bad, they kind of monitor itself, they do those, but if we have. Heating system issues or something like that, more than likely we're calling in the contractors to fix it, if you're not gonna have those specialized tools and things we need. Another thing we did and I actually, me and Jim negotiated with Steve, I don't know if you know him, but he's our water operator.
He's awesome.
But he, he came from a background of being a facility manager and so he knows these heating systems, he knows those, so. So we negotiated into his job description to help us with that and we gave him a little vacation to do that, so. It's not an extra pay bump on there, he just gets a few extra days off a year and he's more than willing to come in and kind of be that point guy for Dan. When it's maybe a little bit above Dan's head, but before we call in the experts to, to go do some of that and. He's also gonna help when the annual maintenance annually running around changing filters in the two new buildings, so.
I don't know if this is a good time to ask or not, Ed, maybe this fits in somewhere further down the line, but I was wondering as far as like the union activity, how that's going to impact this year's budget and.
I need to see when we move forward, I haven't heard anything on negotiating a contract with DPW, DPW became a union recently. We'll be negotiating with them for that, but. I mean, if something gets done before the budget season, we'll, we'll definitely be talking about that and see if we need to add it in, but I don't expect it to be much different than what we've been doing on a year to year basis.
Okay.
He's on, um. He's crossed from water sewer to general fund, so have you prorated some of that?
Well, he doesn't, there's no salary that goes to that, it's just some vacation, but yeah, things will be distributed appropriately, but.
Any big contracts renewing this year?
Any big new contracts?
No, like, so. Sella. That's not renewing.
That's not renewing.
Three more years, I think, for that.
Okay.
No, nothing really big that jumps out, but I will be going through the, through the budget a little bit more detailed. Over the next few weeks and if something really comes up, we have the second portion of our Edmonds Finance Software's.
Yeah.
Transition, we are, been working with them, but that's looking like it's not gonna be finished till about April of next year. So we'll, we'll continue moving on that, but.
And then. What, what's the, this is probably a sensitive subject. What, what's the plan and or budget need for the old ambulance, fire buildings? Are you, are we planning to?
Where, the, the Select Board has decided that they would like to move forward with selling the Depot Street Building and the Union Street Building.
Yeah.
I've sent that to the Planning Commission, Conservation Commission and Heritage Commission, you hadn't heard about it, Rob should be telling you. To discuss that, I'm hoping to have a public hearing in the beginning of October to finalize whether we're gonna keep or sell those buildings, the initial conversation was to keep the police building. We'll probably have to do a little bit more work of what we want to do with that, we've thrown a few ideas around, but we'll look at that, I have talked to. Trumble Nelson brought him in just to look at the building, look it over, see what type of things we need to do to rehab it if we're going to reuse it anytime soon. For office type buildings, I know the, the heating in there doesn't work well and then we have our basic maintenance stuff, some of the doors are. Rotted and degraded on the outside and then we have flooring and paint and all those basic things, no major structural changes unless we try, decide to do something way different with the building. But overall, just getting some sort of cost from them on what it would look like to do that, so we can make an informed decision moving forward.
But to sell the ambulance and the fire, we're, we're not expecting any costs similar to what we had to deal with on the DPW, the old DPW site.
Not on the Shedge Street one, no.
Okay.
Now, there was a little bit of concern, part of the reason we didn't move forward with the land was whether or not the soil around the Depot Building might have been contaminated, but that's not town owned land, so if there is, that would be state. Problem. So we owned the building, the buildings are, so.
Okay.
So, no, not expecting any, anything that we need to budget extra. Out of that, so. We can, we can estimate some revenue if we'd like to, we'll see how the revenues are playing out. The only scary thing is if you estimate some sort of revenue in there and it doesn't sell or you don't get it done, then it's a hit to the budget, so it might almost be better to let it be something extra.
But it becomes a hit to the taxes.
Yeah, it could near the end of the year, yeah. So we need to be careful as we talk through that, but we can get through the October meeting, figure out exactly what we're gonna do, figure out what we think's a reasonable timeframe and. Maybe even talk to a realtor to get a cost and then conservatively put those into the budget.
Yeah.
And the other thing to be careful with as we're talking about that is this is another one of those one time shots of revenue. So if you're putting it into the budget thinking we're gonna hold the tax rate down, you're gonna pay for it next year, so.
Anything else to add?
I have one small thought, something that's been haunting me for quite a while. At town meeting. I spoke against SB two. And after that, the lawyer came up, pulled me aside, said, John, everything you said is absolutely true, but I cannot speak to it, given my position. Said he has worked with towns and seen towns that have been decimated by SB two, unable to pass budgets, unable to maintain. Buildings, unable to keep employees. So I'm not trying to scare us. But we need to keep that in mind as we go through the budget and what I would like is if. Ed can possibly put together a sort of concise list of what SB two demands of us, is that possible?
Yeah, we can definitely look at that, it's. It's not a lot different in this realm, we do have a default budget, reading through the lobby at the day, that's technically the, mine and the Select Board's job to put together, but. It's almost done, I've been working on it, we'll, we'll get that in front of you guys, we'll talk through it, we'll look at it in the budget side, we'll look at it at the Select Board side. You know, I think we need to weigh both sides of those. The decimation you speak of doesn't come with one or even two default budgets, it's places like Weir and stuff that are on their sixth and seventh default budget, bro, that it just really starts to. To play havoc with the town. When you start thinking of that, you have employees that have not gotten any sort of raise in six or seven years and they're not gonna stick around.
I think on the flip side of that though too, that we should try hard not to go into this with a total negative thought, that the SB two is gonna turn us upside down. What it should say to us is, we all as a group need to work really hard to present and provide the very best information we can. To show the townspeople that we are not here just throwing money around and wanting to spend, 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 I think that's the key, is we need to really work hard. At convincing people that we've done the absolute best we can and when you do that, then I think people. Aren't necessarily going to vote down the budget and say, no, I'm, I'm voting no on this, so, you know, I think it's gonna take a lot of work, I think.
I would agree, and we'll see, the big lift for work is gonna be the, the communication side.
How soon would we have the default budget number?
Probably within the next couple of meetings, about the time we're really presenting the budget.
Okay.
And like I said, I went through it the other day, I highlighted, there's probably ten or fifteen blocks through the budget that we really needed to sit down and do some research and math on, on what to do, but. We didn't have a ton of one time projects in there, we had a few, but nothing really substantial, so on SB two, what you do is you take last year's budget. You minus out the one time expenses from it and then you add in the contract type stuff you have, so any loans, if loan payments are going up, if you have long term like the Sella contracts with escalators, those get added to it. And you move forward, there was legislation this year that if you had a position open for a year's worth of time. That you're supposed to take that out, that passed the legislature but was vetoed by the governor in June or something, so we're waiting, veto days coming up when they vote on the, on all the vetoed items. If it gets passed back in, then that's something we'll have to, we'll have to address. If I, understanding is correct, I think that was a close party line type vote anyway, so getting that past the, the veto state, I don't think was gonna be. I don't, I think it's gonna be tough for them to get that passed there, but we'll, we'll have to watch it and see. If not, we're taking out the one time expenditures, we're adding in the contracted stuff that we've promised we would pay moving forward. And we'll, we'll bring the budget forward with that. There are some items in there that. Some items that go down from what we're budgeting, I can see already, and then there's some items that actually we were asking for a decrease and. Last year's budget was a little bit bigger and so we'll, we'll talk through those and we'll probably keep those things in place, looking at the total overall budget as a whole, so.
And I'm interested in an update on the, after the funds that, because when we left, we, we never got a number or.
Okay, yeah, I can give you a detailed update on that. Overall, where we're at is we recovered a little bit over half of that, so. You know, rounding numbers, we're, we're short a little bit under a hundred and, three hundred and fifty thousand, as I stated, that was in the. Public Safety Fund.
Right.
We're finalizing numbers on that right now, but I'm very confident that we came in under budget enough that that's gonna be absorbed into there, that doesn't mean it went away, it just got absorbed. Into that, so fairly confident we're in a place where we're not gonna have to be funding it from a different funding source, but. So that's where we're at and I don't expect anything else, but.
Approximately three hundred and fifty thousand.
Yeah, and I mean, I can get you guys the number.
You think they'll start for many ones?
I just have one other question, Ed, as far as like, it's not that I totally disagree with that, but. You had mentioned that you had Trumble Nelson come in and look at the PD just to see if we wanted to do some rehabbing or whatnot. Is that the only company that you?
No, and I talked with them, that's the only one I got, or just an estimated idea.
Yep.
I don't think we go out and we never do this on projects and get three or four.
Right.
You know, and if someone comes in and says, and it's still gonna be an estimate, I'm not gonna hold them to it because we don't know exactly what we're gonna do with it, but. Normally when someone comes in, if they say, you know, this project's gonna be eighty or hundred thousand dollars. My guess is if we went to three or four companies, it's gonna be a hundred thousand dollars or less than that, so it just gives you, what I'm really looking for is a number. To give the CIP Committee, Budget Committee and Select Board an idea of what it might cost, you know, the Select Board will need that to decide. Are we gonna keep this, are we not gonna keep this, if we do, what are we gonna do with it and how's that gonna change that budget and. Budget and CIP obviously to, to figure out if we decide to move forward that way, how we're gonna pay for that. Yes, Stephen.
Mentioned CIP and. What is the relationship between CIP and the regular budget? In terms of default, I mean, SB two process. Is it still an independent, or an article that is independent of the proposed budget?
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Anything?
Sure, I'll, I'll say the same thing I said last year, I mostly agree with that, I think we're sort of reaching a new steady state. You know, we should be targeting, generally targeting the inflation rate, you know, keeping up on all of our costs, but not bringing in new costs. Um, and so a few, few things that I wanna make sure we're thinking about through the budgeting are sort of the support of the usage of the new facilities, um, something's gonna come up that we're aren't aware of, and we wanna have some flexibility to support that. Um, and then specifically supporting fire and EMS recruitment. Uh, one of our recent select board meetings, Phil said they had, was it four people, five people approached the fire department this summer who had never had any contact with the fire department before, asking about how to join. Uh, so, just wanna make sure we're ready to support, like if, if that continues, we won't be ready to support that kind of recruitment. Um, which of course benefits us all along with. And then, um, I have some, I, I'd like to ask the terms around our sewer budget, we need to really look at that this year.
Yeah.
Um, we had, uh, some, we ran another deficit, was it two years ago, three years ago?
Twenty twenty-three is that.
Right.
Was it that, I was doing some work today, I wanna, I wanna dig a little deeper before we get too deep into that, but some of it, but not all of it, was we started these projects, and I think we're gonna see this in both of those funds, that we have an expenditure in one year and the reimbursement doesn't come into the next year, and it'll close out and make it look like that. Um, but it does appear, and I wanna dig a little deeper, that the revenues that came in didn't support the expenses either for twenty twenty-three, last year it appears that they did, but it was a very small number that went to pay off that. Um, so it's something we definitely need to be looking at, and we should have discussions again with the select board and budget committee about um, the rates coming in, we did get some good news on the sewer side with the city of Lebanon deciding to lower our rates that we pay to them. And we just need to have a, an overall discussion of what that looks like and what we wanna do on our sewer rate side of things. To dig ourselves, we still need to get out of that negative fund balance, and when we get there, we need to build I'm gonna say six months worth of expenses, but I do wanna talk to our auditor and a few other people on where we should really be targeting our fund balance. And then where we should be targeting our capital reserve funds for both of those, um, enterprise funds, so. Um, for people that are newer to the budget committee, I'll just go ahead. Sewer and water are what we call enterprise funds, so those are fee-related and they support themselves, if you will, so they're almost like little standalone businesses, what they bring in needs to cover what they put out. We don't augment that with tax money or CIP money, anything like that, it's all user fee-based in there. Um, the one thing we do do that you'll see in here is we implemented a hydrant maintenance line item from the budget to pay to the water department for taking care of fire hydrants, those types of things, and.
And how would we get into, into a hole with the enterpa- enterprise fund balance if we're paying for what we're being charged?
Well, from a long time ago, what ended up
A long time ago there.
What ended up happening was revenues didn't keep up with expenses and is slowly doing those.
They made a decision not to chart, when Lebanon increased their rate, they made a decision not to increase, and they knew.
Okay.
Hmm, it was intentional, but where does the money come from? We aren't a bank, we don't print money, so it was, in my opinion, a mistake. Um, very big fiscal mistake, and it dug us a very large hole, um, and yeah, and so they were spending out of, essentially out of general funds, right? Um, you were taking cash. So that's the basics of a very wrong, convoluted story, but Lebanon hadn't really been doing studies and looking at their rates, so they came back and said, we need you to pay back this much more, they were also in trouble. And when that happened, at the same time, we were looking at ours saying, whoa, 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 so we took a double hit, and so we right now are not only just paying for our base sewer, uh, day-to-day operations, we're also trying to dig ourselves out of the hole, and then we need to consider, like you said, a fund balance, so we're still in some trouble.
Well, unless you have a ton of funds too, you continue to trickle that fund, those rates up.
Yeah.
Sometimes you go, oh, we wanna hold them the same, but when I was in Vermont, we almost lost SRF and grant funding, cause we hadn't raised rates in a couple of years, and they're they're like, you're setting yourself up for financial disaster. So you need to keep trickling them up, we're at a place now, we really need to be looking at what that deficit is, what our expenses are, and what we need to do to move forward. Um, I'm hoping, but it's always a hope until you see it, that the um, infiltration project that we've been doing, we were pumping quite a bit of stormwater to Lebanon, and we get charged per gallon that goes through there, so the, that's water that's coming in that we're paying to get rid of, that we're not charging our customers for. And so, this new project that we did this summer, hopefully that cuts that back. That's a really huge cost to our sewer system, is that treatment fee. So if we can get that down, and they lower their rates down a little bit there, then.
It's likely gonna be harder to see though, because we haven't had much water.
Right, a little bit right now, yeah, but when we definitely could see that, and Jim trended it, we thought, we've talked about it a lot going into this, that you know, twenty twenty-three, when we had huge storm rates, I wanna say we were passing like ninety thousand hours, don't quote me on numbers, to Lebanon. And then when we don't, and we have drought time like this, we're passing like fifty thousand. So I mean, it's a huge difference in what was getting passed through there, so any storm, rain event, those types of things, we're putting money, water into the sewer, and if we can negate that and then lower it, it's gonna really reduce our costs.
So I should keep water in my flower gardens, right?
Yes, right.
Thank you.
It's a rain.
Yeah. I'm, I'm concerned about, like, if you're talking SB two and so on, um, you have to have the public's trust, and as a former water sewer, um, is there with our apartments, you know, when that surcharge was charged, we were given the information that in about five years, we'd be all set with that. And we're now beyond five years, and now we're hearing, we're not all set either. And that's a, that's a public perception, and to add to that, every time I go to town meeting, I keep hearing the town owns too much property, sell it away. Hey, we built a new police station, I don't think it's gonna go over too big to keep the old one personally. Um, because if you needed that space, it should have been incorporated in the two projects, and I just wanna get that out there, because I think that's gonna be one of the things that gets you no votes, because you've lost, you lose the trust of the public.
I do think though, the select board never presented that we were selling the police department. No, that was never, so you know, you can have bad feelings about it, but no one ever made that promise. It could be aspirational thinking on the part of some of the voters, but if there were longstanding conversations that were held in public during select board meetings, and which we talked about the food pantry going there, right, that was a very common one, they've talked about recreation, they've talked about planning, so I don't think that that should be a point of loss trust, now if we don't get Shed Street, Depot and Fire Department sold, we're gonna be in trouble.
Yep.
Those are the ones that we told people we were selling. And I think we are endeavoring to make good on that promise, you know, we, we can't fight with government on the brownfields at Shed Street, we have to just keep working on it, and got some other work to do on the other.
Yeah, and I can give you a little update on that, I don't have a lot of detail, but, um, we're just trudging through what I'm gonna hope is the final details with DES, we just did another round of water testing. Um, the last couple, what we're seeing in there is high levels of arsenic, but arsenic is naturally occurring, and then they've also found that salt in the soil pushes arsenic out. So because the salt shed and stuff was there, there's, there's a better chance of it doing that, but, um, not for certain, but our, our, our hazardous material people, Kredary, um, they're really pushing DES to say, you know, with this all sorts, with these things, this is naturally occurring, at this point, it's not contamination, if you will, and then I also hammered home the point with them yesterday that everybody around there is on waters, city water, and, you know, so we're not drawing arsenic water out of wells to feed the people, and so they're gonna be doing a little bit more testing, we did get the railroad ties cleaned up, I've sent that over to them. The one thing they may want us to do is a little soil sampling along where the railroad ties were, but they're gonna try to push not to do that at this point, so hopefully we get a, either a clean bill or a very close to clean bill of health, if it's just continued water monitoring, I think we're in a good place to move forward with that sale, but, um, we need to get something that says it's pretty cleaned up before, um, folks and sons can get their, um, their financing, I've talked with the bank themselves, and I think we're close, I, you know, talking with the bank, but we just, we just need a little bit more for them to be comfortable loaning on it.
Um, arsenic, I just double-checked, cause I was always told you don't use railroad ties in food gardens, because the railroad ties, and it's a, it's a common wood preservative, and we had a whole load of railroad ties, what, what they want, the state dumped railroad ties. Those are their railroad ties. As, as I did say in a public meeting, take those ties and dump them over in, to, you know, district two, and let them have at it, because they aren't very, they are not very eager to clean up their own messes.
Good point, we pulled those off our property, there's still a few on their property, but we didn't touch those, but.
Which are probably not leaching anything into our soil.
I respect that.
So, we're continuing to move those two forward, and then we'll have the public hearing on the other two buildings, and hopefully get those, those moving forward.
Anything else?
Are we still on priorities?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, so I, I just pulled the let's see, I was like, I'm gonna go do it, um, so during the select word meeting the other day when we discussed it, um, I had given an initial one, and I can't remember who, so sorry guys, um, but, um, and we updated to prioritize health and safety, fiscal responsibility and staff retention. Those are kind of the three categories, and we put health and safety there.
Hey, can you talk more about staff retention? Isn't staff retention a priority every year, cause in the Z?
So, staff retention in particular, um, we took a really hard hit this year because it was all nice and well and good to say, yay, we saved a bunch of money on health insurance, there are some extremely hard feelings about the health insurance. It hurt a lot of people, um, and I think we have to be really cognizant, might have had great intentions, might have been excited about savings, but you know, I, I'm gonna, I picked the greater because our greater, we don't have a greater operator, so we're not picking on an actual human, but you, you can't expect the greater operator to spend four hours getting a fire authorization while they're driving the greater, right, so the things that you can do if you have a happy little desk job, where you're like, yep, no, try again, beep beep, right, that take a lot of time, these folks hadn't had to do that. I think it was a major shock at something that the budget committee obviously didn't do intentionally, um, and, but I think it is, it was a very negative outcome, and I think we need to be very cognizant, that sometimes we're, we're doing such a great job trying to find solutions, we actually do some harm, so looking at, you know, continuing to fu- fund in a fair way, you know, whatever raise structure we need to fund, but also when we're looking for these great, like, wild savings, so we got, like what we got last year, um, considering the negative effects, because we definitely lost folks.
Just so I'm understanding your comments, Katie, um, and maybe I'm just not hearing this clearly. For me, it wasn't just the budget committee that made that decision, I mean, that was a concerted effort from
I think the idea came out of, from a budget committee member who tha- then quit, which also.
Right, but I mean, the select board had to make the final say on that, along with the town manager.
That's one, it, it falls to the town manager the other day, and it certainly got ourselves hurt, but I think it got ribbon, a lot of it came from budget committee and looking for savings, I'm not picking on you, but it came from this room originally, with help, and uh, Brad Rich was the driver of it, and he worked directly with Ed, I think um, that was a hard one for people, and it wasn't the expected, because when you were told, hey, it's gonna be the same coverage, and you find out it's not the same coverage, um, I, the big, one of the big things that's not covered is weight loss medication. A lot of companies don't co- cover it, but it turns out, that's a big deal. Um, and, and that was a hard one.
I mean, yeah, and some of that was communication, but health trust wasn't covering that anymore either. So, I mean, that was something that was going away, that, you know, maybe we did not communicate as well as we should have going into this, but I think a big part of it was just that workload, I mean, the workload's tough, when you switch insurances, I don't know if any of you've done it lately, but it's it's way harder than it was five years ago. I mean, so they spent them and their wives and us, and we did pull the greater operator and made him work in the office on some days, so they could just work on health insurance, and then.
I picked the greater operator, because we don't have one right now.
Well, we do really, it might seem to be a greater operator, he's an operator.
We did it with, we did it with everybody, and we talked to DPW, we talked to police, we said if someone's having trouble, have them work to the office, it's just a lot of work, it's, it's, it's really frustrating for people, it's extremely stressful. And then it's also frustrating when you go in to pay for your insurance and it your little card gets kicked back, and you have to pay for it out of pocket, then get reimbursement, and I mean, those things happened some on the last one, they happened a little more in the beginning of this one, but.
Sorry, bud.
When you're evaluating insurance, do you have any employees sit in with you?
We did not, I, I had a couple of my executive team, the higher-ups, it's a mistake that I look back now going, I should have had a little bit more involvement in that, but.
Sorry, but comment to a question, first of all, um, I agree with Jean's point of view that we're all kinda in this together, uh, we're in this together as a budget committee, as a select board, and as a town manager. And I think last year we made decisions in that manner, so to say where it started and where it ended up, I don't think that's fair. Um, the second is, do we have the same insurance right now, and do we plan to have the same insurance next year?
Right now, I plan to keep the same, a big part of the disgruntled feelings was that change, if we change right back to what we had before, they'd be going through pre-authorizations again, and all, all the stuff that goes along with changing insurance.
Correct.
One of the things we're gonna be looking at, we haven't done it yet, but we're gonna be looking at the and we had talked about this last year, the savings that we get from the deductible, we funded a hundred percent of the deductible, we know it's not gonna be used, the savings from that, we can move to our health benefits savings account, and we can use that to help offset some insurance costs moving forward, so we're gonna strategically look at that. I wanna show the employees over the next year or two that there's gonna be some cost savings from this for them as well, I mean, any cost savings they get is gonna help the town as well, so if we can keep keep that little pool of money working for itself, working in the insurance, we still saved two hundred thousand dollars, even with this little pool of money that might be left over when we're done. So if we can use that to help to stay in its own little pot there, and help the employees, help the taxpayers, I think we can really start to show a benefit, I still believe when we get, got through all those hurdles, that we have better insurance now than we had last year. I mean, there's, there's not many people that have insurance, even though it's a little it's cheaper than what we had before, but it's still expensive for the employees on a week-to-week basis, but the deductible is a hundred percent covered, except for a few copays for insurance, so, I mean, that's, that's pretty darn good insurance.
So, can Nancy's question, not on the front end, but now, have we had an opportunity to sit down with some employees and say, here's what happened last year? Which we're planning to do for next year, what's your feedback?
We have nothing.
Do we plan to do that?
We can, we can try.
Cause it sounds like we had a real issue, and one that we need.
We mostly had a really big issue down here. In DPW.
Okay.
The other places, we had some ruffled feathers, we had some things going on, but overall, I think people now are going, okay, it's, it's working, okay, we're good, we've gotten through the hurdles.
Would you say, do you think that's why DPW was going for a union?
That was the big contributing factor, I think there was a few other things that had gone on when I talked to a person that had left. They talked about some things that happened when Ryan was there, a few decisions that happened when I was here, the insurance thing, just kind of this big snow.
But any change, would have, any transition would have been difficult.
Any healthcare transition would have been difficult, the only one that would not have been that we were looking at was going from the plan we had now to a high deductible plan and health trust. The reason we didn't do that is health trust would only let us fund fifty percent of the deductible. So to go to the employees and say, hey, we're gonna save you twenty bucks every two weeks, but you have to pay two thousand dollars out of pocket, and it's not gonna go over well either, and so we went with the company we went with because we knew this was a big change, and we could fund a hundred percent of the deductible, had a reasonable promise.
And, um, did you, are you on that plan so that you know, um, what you experienced?
I am not, I can be, if you guys want me to, but I opted out when I came here to save the taxpayers, I mean, uh, it actually passed me a little more every year to be in my life's plan instead of our plan, but.
No, I'm just curious, because then you would have firsthand knowledge, not.
I have some knowledge. I have some knowledge, but I've been dealing with a lot of the issues, but.
Well, looking around the table, I think um most or all of us um were in. Quite strong support of the the way that went last year and I echo your your feeling that that we have to own that. And if it was a mistake and there's ways to um to make some diff- some changes in that, certainly. It goes forward. Um but um this is not just one individual who happened to be on the board at that time and now is off.
The other thing I can tell you is I slept better this year as the legislature drove one of the companies we were looking at out of business.
They tried really hard on Health Trust.
And I've gotten. Five or six calls over the last two weeks from other cities and towns asking us about our insurance because they're looking to switch to that.
Well, I guess.
It's still a problem.
The thing is that people didn't realize that the transition is gonna be painful.
But it just, you know, as with anything else, the more you communicate, the better off you're gonna be. And and sometimes that seems like such a time suck, but it's worth doing.
It does, and I don't wanna make any excuses, but. This was transitioning at the exact same time that that fraud happened as well. Our time went that way and there it it could have been communicated a lot better. It wasn't. I also think there was some unexpected stuff from our side and from their side. We even ran across one thing that the. Insurance brokers were surprised that happened, but. We got through those, we worked our way through and I think we're in a good spot now. We do have one employee that maxed out their deductible. Or at least one of their deductibles in their family. And it seems to be working flawless. They go to the doctor and they pay nothing now and so.
Good, but not good.
Lose because of each.
I think it's really only been a re-couple. Um we have a lot more hard feelings than we have lost people. We did lose a couple, but um. I think the majority, we we had a quite a turnover here in DPW. But a a large majority of those were the. Entry level positions and they got offered a lot more money to go somewhere else.
And that and that's hard because when you're kind of borderline and they give you like a few dollars more and you're kind of having a bad day, it's easier to. Say yes, like it is not a matter of finger pointing. I think some of them even, you know. They are like, wow, they're gonna pay for my insurance. I'm like, it's not any good, but if people don't always weigh out the full piece, just kind of like we had a lot of surprises. I I really just want that communication piece. Um and I would really encourage everyone to consider not making any like. Don't change it to seventy-five percent of the right, like to save money because I think that's where like it'll be hard feelings on top of hard feelings. Try to try to stick to this one and make it either better or better communication. But not, uh they, I think the past comments about, you know, Ryan, when Ryan was here, we did um increase the amount they paid. Right? Because it was happening everywhere and we couldn't really justify it and I and we've done that.
I will be doing a benefit study, probably not this next year, but the year after, but. Just so you guys know, I'm very confident that we're. We're over the copay than what everybody else pays. Most people are in the ten to fifteen percent. And we're, most of our employees are paying twenty.
In the new year, are there any changes to the plan which are gonna cost employees money?
Not that I know of. We'll be doing, I mean, we really haven't gotten our update. That usually comes about mid October. From the insurance company, so that's when we'll really be. Looking at the the changes, but I I don't, I don't expect any and I haven't heard of any and like.
But obviously they'll be considered very, very closely before they get implemented.
Yeah, but I don't know that we're gonna have a lot of, I mean, we're not, we're not considering any changes.
No, I understand that, but before we accept the company passing these changes through to the employees, they will be considered very carefully.
We can look at it, but that's not how health insurance works. They write you and they say, here's the new plan. They don't say, do you want to accept it? We don't get choices anymore. The insurance company change, if we wanted to start creating our own plans and stuff, then yeah, that's where you get into. You know, do we wanna add this? Do we not wanna add that? But the health insurance has changed so much over the last few years.
But if something did come down the line, we could increase the subsidy.
We could make some changes on our side of. Paying for people. Um I don't know that we can subsidize more than a hundred percent. But we could change copays, those types of things.
So like Medicare, Tracy, they say, here's the changes and here's what you're gonna pay. You don't have any choice.
That's exactly what I did.
Could we um take a look at a couple of major employers timelines because something that did happen last year was our change came after you had to make your decision. So if you you had a family member that you could be on their plan at like DHMC or Dartmouth College. Their deadline had already passed. Is there a way to consider getting out information before that deadline so that someone? Because it is beneficial to us in many ways to have them opt into another plan and certainly if they felt more comfortable on their partner or spouse's plan, I would want them to be able. To take that opportunity.
And I said, that's, that's true and false. Yes, we can get it out faster.
Okay.
But we had multiple employees that their families worked at Dartmouth.
Right.
And because our cha- our insurance was changing, that's a substantial change and you can still, but enroll. They could have enrolled in February.
And it it might have been the HR person being crappy. We don't know that for somewhere else, not here, but I'm saying like. There were a few people who felt that they were told, while you already passed the date, you can't change it.
Yeah, no, they could have. We have already talked about, as soon as we get the information, we're gonna blow it out to our employees.
And maybe telling our employees, this is a substantial change. You are legally entitled to switch to your partner's assets. Don't let them fool you.
We'll do that. It does substantially help us. We do have the medical buyout, which still substantially helps us and helps them at the same time. We've talked to a few employees that were not happy, but you know, do the math, if it works to go to your spouse's employee, we can implement the medical buyout. It'll save the town quite a bit of money, helps the employee.
Yeah, it it uh it's it's worth making the extra effort, I think, because there are so many. Towns, organizations, happy to poach our employees, you know, so we wanna keep them.
Um so I think, I think that one of the things that we had been talking about. Um and we talked about on the select board and talked at about like trying to think creatively for like non. Monetary ways to make Enfield just a great place to work, so people could not be poached for a few dollars. Um and I think we we can think about that in ways outside of the budget and I've challenged all of us to think about it in that way. But I think um. I'm acutely aware that we're basically in competition with the default budget. So as we have that in the back of our minds, um I think thinking about the. Sometimes I feel like one of the places where it seems easiest to cut is like professional development. And I think that's one of the, one of the things that might go a long way to make Enfield feel like a a great place to work and because we've had. You know, turnover in the past year and our town has faced some challenges in the past year that might have been. That might have benefited from proactive professional development. And I think um. If in the course of your professional lives, you go to a continuing education or a professional development event. You come back to work with fresh eyes and a refreshed attitude. Um and I think it helps a lot with joy and work and well-being and and happiness in your job, basically. So I would encourage us to think very carefully before we um consider that an expendable thing, which I I know has come up in the past. And has been considered expendable in the past.
Another thing, even before the union contract comes up, um I told you guys about it last year. We've been working hard this year. We've came up. With what we would call a career ladder in DPW. So instead of just having a light equipment operator, we've come up with a plan. Where we have a light equipment operator, one, two, and three. So people have a little bit of control over. Time and race education that they get, that they can move up through these steps. You know, we obviously can't move everybody to the top, but I think we came up with a really good plan to move people. Kind of at their pace and our pace a little bit up through the heavy equipment operator and class A C D L type stuff. Where they'll, I'm gonna say plateau if they do, because then you're moving into supervisor and management positions that we can't just let everybody move into, but. Um I do think that's gonna be a little bit helpful to have a little bit more movement through those ranks besides your annual COLA. And then um on the police side, we kind of did the same thing and one thing that I'll be talking to the chief about and we'll talk to you guys is. Um the emergency services committee made the recommendation to try to get some of our police officers E M T trained. We can see some cost savings probably on the ambulance side of that. But with that, we would like to be able to give some sort of stipends or bonuses or something to the ones that get that and respond to medical calls. We've talked about not only on duty, but maybe doing some sort of incentive for them to kind of work with the ambulance and respond to off duty. And again, that'll help us on the contracted outside of things.
Um how is, how if at all is the DPW union going to impact the budget in front of us?
I don't think there's, I don't think there's a lot of it for this year. We're gonna have to go through the negotiation process whenever that starts. When we do get into those processes. You know, there there might be a few items negotiated that have a monetary cost. One of the things that come to mind that we already do for them, but. I've often seen in, meaning negotiations are, you know, stipends or uniforms, those types of things. Those will be small costs. On the flip side, it's gonna be wages, benefits, those types of things that that'll have some sort of cost to them. They'll come forward. I'll be working with the select board very closely on those and you know what we're gonna agree to, what we're not gonna agree to. We'll have to look at those. Um. I think the school district does it, but if it seems a little bit out of whack, it might end up being something that's a separate warrant article or something to improve this.
Do we have any data on the fully loaded cost of a DPW employee union versus non-union? Rural community?
Not really. I mean, when we look at our competitors, we have some that are, some that aren't, but we still gotta look at. Overall average wages, those types of things. I don't know that we're gonna get the data to say it's gonna be this much more expensive. I don't expect it to be a lot more. It's. It's what we agreed to in negotiations, but you know, we have to be there and impartial. We need to go through these things and make sure that we're not. Unfairly saying no. Um the one thing that I would say is. If we're negotiating and we think something's a good idea and it's a good benefit for DPW, why would it not be a good benefit for everybody else? So I think we need to to look at that and understand the full impact as we move forward.
I think that this is going to be a bridge building and communication tool more than. An ask for increased wage. I know there's some feelings out in the wider world that sometimes unions increase in wages, but if you were being fair and impartial. And I think everybody here really is and has been very careful over the years. I think you'll find it's not gonna be that different, the things that they're going to ask for. You know, it might be something like on call, discussing on-call pay and whether or not that's a valid option. That's something that has been floated over the years. So you'll have those discussions. I don't know if you're gonna, you're going to change, but I think what will change is the amount of buy-in and the maybe the feelings of inclusion. Um and if that feeling of inclusion causes us to retain more staff, I'm very excited about it frankly, because. If that, maybe just sometimes people need another avenue to be heard and and we've been really busy. I'm not picking only, I'm not hearing, it was um crazy.
Yeah, the one place we may see an immediate and probably should budget this year. For an increase is in our legal line, because we will have an attorney that sits in on negotiations with us and works through that, so. Um we'll we'll have to add some money there.
Anything else? Twenty twenty-five, ah, twenty twenty-five budget review?
Yeah, like I said, I'm just gonna do a a quick overview. If you guys have listened to the selection meetings, you've probably have heard this. But um looking to. Let's start with revenues. I don't wanna say that's the bad news, but the bad news is your revenue report does not reflect the revenue.
I had a little heart attack last week.
We've been trying to catch up on reconciliations, all those things. We're training a new bookkeeper person. So we're coming around. I wanna say she's at least, from what we see, she's doing a wonderful job. She's catching a lot of little things we're moving through. We have some bookkeeping issues in twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-four to fix. And we're and we're working through that. Um with all this stuff going on. She has a stack of revenues on her desk to input that have not been in the bookkeeping system.
I hope a lot of those are motor vehicle fees.
But I can be very confident and I can get you those numbers. Um I don't have them with me tonight. I probably should have brought them, but. I never went to our bookkeeping act fund system. For our town clerk revenues anyway. I go to our town clerk who has detailed records of everything that's come through the door. What I can say is we're, we're on track to actually exceed motor vehicle revenues at this point. But but we're on track to exceed those and then on taxes that have been billed, we're ninety-five percent collected, so we're. We're doing very well. That's, that's right where we normally are and it's better than most communities. So um. We're doing good there. We're in the middle of what we call the lean process. So in July, a bunch of stuff went out for lean. I should have brought those papers too, but I, she penned me the last three years of lean things. Ninety percent of the people on those are the same people every year. I would say at least half or more of those are people that are purposely obstinate, not wanting to pay their taxes to the last household. They pay a lot more that way, but.
That's how they like.
To them. So they went out to lean. Usually we'll lean. You know, ten or twelve houses or a little bit more. When it comes down to the point of actually taking properties, it's one or two. And they all get paid off at the last minute. So we expect that same thing this time. I think we're gonna have a mobile home. We'll probably work with the mobile home park again to. To make that transition and get something back on the books. And I don't know if we're really, the one other property we may have is F off Rice Road. It's a big acreage type property and the. Person died and has no heirs, so that's going to go through the tax dealing process. So um we're continuing to work on that. I worked with our attorney for. A month, month and a half, trying to look for heirs and different things to to do that. So we'll, we'll be moving those two through for sure and then. If there's any others, we'll be taking those to the select board in October, I believe, the finish of that process.
Any, any crystal ball moves and meals?
Um, a little bit. It's a fuzzy crystal ball at this point, but it it made it through the legislature in a way where we're supposed to be getting. Similar to what we got last year, so that I'm expecting that to come in a little higher than we budgeted. Um I think most of our state revenues are gonna be at or a little higher than we budgeted, so I I think that's good. Um flipping at the end, some of our, I think, planning board revenues, couple of those are lower, but. Most of our big higher revenue things are coming in at or exceeding our our revenue projection. We haven't done it yet. We're getting ready to do a D R A reg- revenue projection. I expect um. I can think of current use penalties. I'm not a hundred percent sure on timber tax, but I think all of those will be coming in a little over what we've. Budgeted as well, but I can update that at the next.
Excuse me, D R A? What does that serve?
I just. Yeah, they set the tax rate, right? Remember the number that comes in November?
So in what we do, right now, we'll fill out a form for them updating our revenue projections. And it's just kind of a precursor and then at tax rating, rate setting time, we'll get another one of those and we'll start putting. That's what 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 we call actual revenue, but we're still kind of projecting a little bit for the year and they'll set the tax rate up.
So we expect by November, we'll be caught up on these numbers matching reality?
I think so. I talked to her today and we're gonna start spending a little extra time. We're gonna give her some comp time, even if we have to pay a little bit of overtime. We're gonna, we're gonna do some extra work to to get those numbers in, so we can.
Do we? So based on the problems with Shed Street, do we think, do we think this sale will still go through this year?
I don't think so. I think that's gonna be one that hits us a little bit. All right, and that's another, another edge of my concern for.
I think so. Yeah, we did.
So the line is ninety thousand, but it it meant to include eighty thousand from Shed Street.
Just assuming it's correct, the ambulance line, it looks like we're doing a nice job of collecting, definitely there's that over budget.
Yeah, last time I ran that, it looked like we were right around the fifty percentile in collections lately. Yeah, last time I ran that, it looked like we were right around the fifty percentile in collections lately. Talking with Lebanon, I went through those numbers a little bit with them. I think that they're I think at their council meeting, they said eighty percent or something, but when I talked to him, he backed a lot of other things out and he said we're we're pretty much in line with what they're collecting as well. So our collections are going pretty well.
So those have improved over the last couple of years, so that's good.
They have. A big part of that has been um getting the reports in really timely and we've been doing a lot better job at that over the last couple of years and.
Yeah, that sounds good to see that improvement. I hope you've worked hard on that. And just my, my other question, just on the whole, the recreation and youth sports, how is that going? This year?
Going better now. But um, our youth sports, our rec director is running soccer this year. We'll be running through. I know we had a coaches meeting last week and they were really happy to see that coaches meeting and the communication that came from that. We'll be, we'll be moving forward with that. We are transitioning everything to infield recreation. At this point, we've done a few things, but everything's starting to transition over. I need to get some letters out soon to do some revenue collection and I wanna talk with with Todd on that before we get those out. I know what we told them to budget for, but I know we also didn't run basketball and softball, so what we actually built for is we're gonna, we're gonna figure that out. Um, trying to keep a little bit of a buffer in the youth sports line, which we did do. We were able to collect enough next year to have a little bit of a buffer. And then we also spent a little bit less time that we needed to. Talking with Todd, he feels the same thing. He thinks the first season or two is gonna be a lot of work for him, but I think we can, I think we can drive those costs down a little bit, being a little more efficient, like. I still believe it's gonna be best for Mascoma Sports in general to have some professional administration behind.
I did the summer camp, so the revenues and expenses kind of matched up with that, with their budget.
Yeah, and youth camps ran different. I mean, that doesn't run through there at all, but yeah, I think, I think overall in recreation, we're, we're on track. I was a little bit concerned when I looked at it, because it looked like recreation line was overspent a little bit for this time of year. But we've also gone through most of what we're gonna do. I mean, we have the trunk or treat coming up and then a little bit into hometown holidays and stuff, but for the most part, a big portion of our rec expenses have been already expended.
Do we think the other towns will continue to contribute?
I think they will. I need to work with Todd a little bit more now that he's new, but you know, how we've set it up is if they don't contribute, then that fee gets best onto the parents, so. I mean, I don't want to have to charge people the, the cost of that would be. But if we need to, we need to. I'm not gonna put that cost on the the infield taxpayer, but we also already have that little buffer in youth sports, like I said, so it's kind of outside of having to put it in our general fund, we can tap into that fund to cover something that we might need to cover.
Anything else in revenue?
Will you include the water and sewer revenue, that question?
Yeah, what, what's that page about? I wasn't, no.
I mean, we can do it a little bit. I didn't go through the water revenue too much, but I can tell you, and I talked to Jim today, it looks like our sewer revenue is tracking about nine thousand dollars under what we projected. So talk to him today to see if there's any way we can turn tail costs a little bit to keep that down. The other thing we've talked about is we budget twenty-five thousand dollars to go into the capital fund. And I think that we're getting to the end of the year, we look at that and instead of running a deficit and our fund balance a little higher, if we move fifteen thousand instead of twenty-five thousand to keep that tracked at least, we'll, we'll do that, but I think at this point, I would recommend that we hold back the twenty-five, continue catching up that fund value. And then, then we're rebuilding our savings elsewhere. Not enough.
How deep is the hole at this point?
The twenty twenty-three budget says one ninety. It was one oh six, but I know one of the things we're gonna see, and I think we're gonna really see it in water, so I know on people to panic, but we had a little over thirty-six thousand dollars worth of expenditures from the big projects we're doing and we didn't get the reimbursement. So that's gonna change that figure as we come through twenty twenty-four and twenty twenty-five to get a final fund balance, but it does reflect in that, but it'll come right back out when we get the extra revenue, so. Oh, I wanna dig a little bit deeper into that and make sure I, I fully understand it.
You might remember, um, it's on my laptop, but do you remember how deep the hole really was in sewer at the worst case?
Oh, it was like, it was like four hundred thousand.
I mean, what is it now? I remember we have a chart.
Yes.
The chart would be awesome.
So if I, if I just straight line this um sewer principal line, in for an annual total, it's about a million dollars?
Yeah, nine hundred seventy-five thousand-ish.
Okay, um, so we're about twenty percent of our annual revenue, we're in the hole.
Right now, we have seven hundred and twenty-four thousand two sixteen fifty-seven in revenue. After three billing cycles, that's where I I use that and I tracked it out to say we're gonna come in about nine thousand dollars short if we keep trending exactly like we're trending.
Okay.
So, like I said, I wrote Jim today and said if there's places we can save some money, let's save some money. We're gonna look at that twenty-five thousand, because that's part of that overall expenditure. If we can pull that out, we're trending in the positive. It's not as far in the positive as we'd like it to be, but it's trending in the positive.
Who in, where and when are sewer and water rates set?
We set them with the select board at the end of each year.
Okay.
We need to dive into this a little bit deeper. And if we can't do a good job figuring out, it may be one of those things that we need to pull someone in again to help us get the rates caught up and set for like the next five years.
So, do we set rates once a year?
Again, it's the reality that you can only move from so much anyway. You're, you're limited in what you can do with the water rates. As, no, as a practical matter to what's acceptable to your taxpayer.
Yeah, and what is that somewhere south of ten percent?
It has been in the past by a percentage or two.
I think the last two years would have been increased by seven.
That's right.
And we, we felt it was the most that the customer, that the clientele could absorb.
Yeah, I get it.
So you, you have that on, on the one hand as a limitation.
Another limitation is, you know, we're all talking affordable housing, so if you're a landlord and this is higher than other towns, how do you come up with affordable housing? From people that are still gonna turn the faucet on and let it run. Still, there's plumbing pool, whatever, you know.
But that's where I said, we really need to look at it this year, with that rate decrease coming, with the I N I project happening. Hopefully, we're still in a spot, those are not having to really raise the rates and we can see, see a little bit more income coming in.
Yeah, because we were expecting to be positive at this point.
Yeah, this could have been the great even year.
I think we're gonna be a little bit closer when everything comes out, but like I said, I wanna dig deeper to fully understand it, but I think we're gonna be a little bit closer to like that one forty-one fifty range behind right now.
And we should look at, because we had based our projections off of the users and the amount we were using at that time. And we did lose a significant user along the way, and I'm not sure we got enough new users to make up for that.
Well, we lost a significant loser, plus everybody almost is losing less and less and less. Every time you buy a new dishwasher, a new toilet or something, you're using less than you did before.
Which is a good thing.
Decreases our revenue. Very, very substantially less than what the And even with the two car washes, you think that
I mean, it's all good things, but in terms of volume or users, it's very hard.
And then on the sewer side, the brewery uses almost nothing and we have worked with them to try to to try to even that out, because ninety percent of their water uses goes out the door in a keg or a can. There's not going down the sewer.
That's how water users are in spot.
They will, but that was part of the negotiation, getting them here too, is that will allow you to put in a meter and will offset sewer costs and those types of things, that you're not putting it down the sewer.
I just wanted to say, read the newsletter this month on water conservation that the Conservation Commission put in. Interesting, and you mentioned that.
That is not good for revenue.
I know. Well, if we save the, the use of it, it will.
Only in the long term.
Budget?
The general budget?
Yeah.
I mean, overall, I'll just go through kind of what I told the select board, and if we have specific questions, we can do that, but overall, expenses are generally on track for this year. Um, there's been a few areas which expenses seem a little high, that's normal, and then a few areas that we've been able to, to save some money. Finance administration looks overspent, but all of our software hardware expenses that live in this gap that have been completed. So those projects are done. Um, we may have a little bit of expenditure out of them, but not a lot more. Um, general government buildings are hot, are high, but again, most of the projects are completed. We'll be watching this budget through the year. We did move to like universe for some cleaning supplies, those types of things, which are trending a little bit higher, but it's really nice to have consistent products in here and do that. So we'll, we'll continue to watch that and, and see what we, what we can do there. Good news, bad news, we had this same story last year and ambulance personnel's trending above budget. The good news behind this is that we continue to reduce the response from the city of Lebanon in some areas. We do have increased call load as well, so we'll, we'll have to see. The problem with that is the bill from Lebanon is in next year's budget, not this year's budget. So um, we continue to watch that. Um, the good thing is, for the first time since I've been here, I'm looking at time cards to look at, you know, are we over responding for calls? Don't we're getting too many people there? So we're starting to have those protocol discussions of making sure we get the right number of people on scene. Where two years ago, the conversation was, can you get somebody on scene? So it's, it's good, Chief Holland's working with me. I don't know if the whole budget committee has heard that conversation going on at the select board level and the the recommendation from the ESAC committee, but we, we promoted as no cost raise Chief Holland to Public Safety Director, so he now administratively oversees all three departments, ambulance, fire and police. We did, with compensation, promote Lieutenant Fry to the Deputy Chief. And we were gonna do this one anyway, but Corporal Smith to Sergeant Smith. And we've, we've trickled down a little bit of the work that Roy was doing onto them. A lot of it was being done already, because I had tasked Chief Holland with pretty much running the public safety project with me and helping out there, so um we have made that move and that's, that's already starting to pay dividends. We're finding some really good things to do there. The chiefs are starting to buy into it even more than they did before. Starting to see that, that things are getting easier on them. We had our first one the other night, where Chief Holland presented the C I P for the ambulance and it gave Richard the night off instead of coming in and having to, to do that for her, so um, just nice things to see in that way. So we'll, we'll be continuing to work on that and Chief Holland's working on the response protocol stuff with me as well. The health officer slightly over budget, that's due to the mailings that went out for the septic rule. That was an unbudgeted expense that maybe we should have budgeted, but we didn't for the mailing of those letters. But we'll, we'll be able to make sure that we cover that. I'm slightly concerned about our public assistance budget as we're coming to the end of the year. It's a little overspent, but we do have some money that maybe help offset that if needed. And we'll continue to manage this budget the rest of the year to help offset any overages, so. Finally, on the expense side, our principal expense line might scare you if you look at that on the debt service line. It's actually good news. So um, expense line, our long-term bonds notes, um, it's almost double what was budgeted. Though this initially looks bad when the building loan payments were due because of the delay in pulling funds, we were able to pay a lot more to principles than we did the interest, so you'll see the interest lines down. And then also in that line is um loan funds and things from the C I P fund and the C I P money won't be transferred over to offset. So we kind of went through that, looked at it and, and we're in a, a pretty good shape. I might have to list up wholesome numbers for you next time, but um we were going through Brittany Hall budget line, looking at that. Um, good news, I think we're coming in under budget on all of these, but the finance moves we made, setting up those loans, pulling money late, all of those types of things were sitting at what, four point nine million right now in principal? I wanna say it's four point nine, we'll get you those numbers, but that's almost a million dollars less than we pulled, so what I'm really trying to say is the few payments that we have made almost went a hundred percent for principal. Which really brings that down, and when we looked at a long-term amortization, that's a huge cost savings to the town, so. We made some really good, good strides there. I'm sure the same thing happened on the public safety building, because we actually waited till our bond counselor in Mascoma Bank called and said, what are you guys doing? We've gotta pull some money. Oh, okay, we'll pull some money. With that, I'll get you an update soon. I don't have it with me tonight, but um you know, cash in the bank, we're doing fine. We're not in any any concern of having to pull um notes anticipated, anticipated on taxes. And we're, we're sitting in a really good spot in a cash position. That's what allowed us to do those types of things is pull back as far as we can. I'm not taking that cash out. In that line, did we also make the extra payment from the interest that we ended on CDs? So we might still have a little bit of money extra from the interest that we earned on the loans by putting them in CDs when we had the cash flow to cover that, so. Um, I think I told you guys last year, but that's money that we, we can't just use it in the project or something like that. It has to go towards paying the principal down.
So eh, beyond the um, the cash for the buildings, at some point during the budget committee process this year, can we look at all of our bank accounts and get a total of how much money we have? And where it's invested? And discuss if there are opportunities to invest beyond a point zero zero five percent at Mascoma? Uh, if it's something sitting in the bank?
We can look at it a little bit. We're not gonna have much room to go invest anywhere, it's it's just something we're really not allowed to do. The trust fund stuff can, we may be able to do a little bit of C D here and there. We can go to the New Hampshire Investment Pool and put some of our money in there, which is a little bit more money, but.
So I'd like to, I, I have no idea um, right now, what kind of cash we have. And I would like to understand that. I'd also like to understand for my trust fund balance, all the trust funds, how much do we have? Um, what's the turn on that cash? And how much liquidity we need? And how we can invest it at something closer, right now, four and a quarter?
Some of that, we have no, no control.
Okay, so let's get down that path for a second. So who is overseeing the trustees of the trust fund and, and looking?
They are, they're elected officials, it's their job.
Are auditors looking at that at all?
They, they get the figures and they look over it, but.
Once upon a time, we got this really stellar deal and we thought we were gonna make some money and not losing a lot of money, so there's some pretty hard feelings around doing adventurous some investments.
So I'm right, talking adventure, some like investments.
No, I, I think the C D conversation is worth having. We've had quite a few presentations with the select board and the trustees. Haven't gotten a lot of movement on investments, I think that just historically, there's some because I understand what you're saying.
The good news is I don't know about that history, um, and I'm looking forward. And I think we have some people around the table that know responsible investing and we can take a look at that.
We're not, basically not allowed to do responsible investment. Really restricts what you can do. Really restricts what you can do.
And at state, and the state law may be restricted, but as, as a town, responsible investing is not putting it in an S and P five hundred. It's putting it in a CD where you know you don't lose principles. Right? And so we've proved we can do it for the loans.
We can definitely do it on the cash flow side of things, if we're, if we're not going very far out. I think, right, three months max.
So the three month, the three month rate right now on a CD is as good as the two-year rate on a CD.
Yeah, and we can definitely look at that on that cash flow side. On the trustee side, we can get you the reports, but you're gonna have to go to the trustee of trust fund to talk to them.
So my understanding on that is, do you, is that even always?
Last one question.
Do you have two out of three positions full?
That's all.
Okay. And they have guidelines such as, they can't put it all in the same bank necessarily. So who's available to take it to the bank around their job and do this stuff? And it's a lot more complicated, and it's not something they're, they're having a hard time having trustees.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So there's a vacancy.
So I guess. So is it, as a, as a budget committee that's been elected, I feel as though we have a responsibility to be looking at these things. And I have no problem asking for it. If at some point, there's something we can't do, great, let's at least explore it first. And I would respectfully request that we do that during this session.
Just like, even like a roll in three-month CD where you just put a lot of pilot.
Except if you're here to do it and you don't have cash flow. But one of the things we're gonna see is this new software is gonna give us better cash flow tracking. Right now, we're, we're, we're like rolling in something that's better than DOS. But it's not awesome for cash flow tracking. It's not. So I, I, cause I'm very much like you, I invest. Right, and I do it for other organizations. But it, we need, we need that dashboard and the new software.
We can pull monthly bank statement.
Right, I was gonna say, you, you have a bank account, right? And there's a statement every month that says how much cash is in there? How low does that go every year? Every month? Like one, if you look at the lowest point of the year, how low does it go?
I don't know that number off, off my head, but we usually have.
A hundred thousand, five hundred thousand, million?
Probably closer to a million.
It's just gone more.
Point zero five. Yes.
I do think we need to be cognizant that we've got a backlog in finance. You know, we had a major, major financial issue. We obviously don't have all of our reports up to date, so those things that we're gonna be asking for data, right, they still take time out of finance. And I, I know it's important, and I ask Ed all the time for things that I can't have, because it just isn't, we, we have, unless we're gonna pour some money into overtime and humans.
See, I can bring that in, but I think this is something that's.
Sounds like that'd be a good investment.
A lot of discussion in budget.
I'm willing to have that.
We can definitely look at it, but like I said, we might need to do a small subcommittee to look at this outside a budget committee, or we're not gonna finish the budget.
Thank you for being.
And it's probably a couple meetings to understand that or more.
I'll speak up if the select board wanted to have someone on that committee, I'd be willing to do it.
Me too.
I think it's a good idea.
Excellent idea.
I do say we start with the treasurer and look at the cash flow, look at what we can do on our side that's a little easier and more flexible. And then you might start moving into trust funds and understanding what they're doing.
And we need to onboard at least one more trustee and probably some kind of, well, but we were going to lose one of the trustees, because they are eminently moving. So we, this is another thing, you guys know people who have financial, like, we need to recruit for these positions. We have a lot of really talented people in this room, which is awesome. We need some talented people to fill those shoes too.
Who's, who are the trustees?
Well, who will be the trustee remaining? Cause one person is moving, so.
There's only two trustees?
Is the one that would be remaining.
How long has she been trustee?
She's been on there for a while, but she has never served as treasurer. And that's the big job.
And I don't feel like she can.
Do the treasurer.
She has her own business that.
And those are elected, meaning.
For the rest of the year, the board of selectmen can appoint to fill a vacancy. We, we can fill a vacancy, which would last until town meeting next year.
Because no one ran for that open position.
That has been the difficulty.
Re-constructed Scott.
Can't find anybody.
Requested John, right? But he turned it down.
He hasn't fully turned it down yet. Maybe with enough one leaving here. Doesn't want to do a frame long-term or permanently, or be treasurer.
But fresh eyes are always best. If someone knows of someone who wants to do it, and has a qualification to do it, then by all means, please make them known. I would start with the town manager so that he can do some basic vetting, and then he would bring it to the board of selectmen.
Also, when, when you only have three, and then you're gonna lose two, it's harder to recruit.
Well, it also means that if it's a one-person order trustees, they can't do anything.
Sounds like that is volunteering.
She's trying to bury you.
No select board member can.
No, no select board can hold it, nor can the town treasurer hold it.
We really need, in addition to the three, we really need to think about having somebody who is being trained up. And just like we do, you know, alternate, just like we do in other committees, so.
Responsibility is good and large, but the meeting load is very light.
Is there anyone in our citizens academy that might be qualified? I can look and see, and I can ask them when we get to the end.
Yeah, I mean, that'd be a natural British thought.
There might be somebody in our CIP is very qualified.
Yes, I would say so, if anyone would be interested.
Anything else on the twenty-five budgets?
That's what I had unless you guys have any direct.
Just one more question, Ed. So going into this budget season, what do we have for open positions still? No, 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 no.
Yeah, I think right now we have one police officer positioned, but we've got verbal confirmation that we have a certified officer coming over, I think in October, September, October.
So that's the only vacancy we have across the board?
And I think we might have one open right now in light, light equipment.
We have a small gap in the police department if the new fellow can come over, but it's the current one that's leaving.
No, I think we'll be fully staffed.
No, we will then. But the current, Matt is leaving?
No.
Oh, he's not leaving? That changed.
The for sale sign, you didn't see it come down?
I did see it come down, and I didn't know the threshold. I wasn't gonna knock on his door.
No, we will be fully staffed at that point, and I don't expect any openings.
Confident are we, the certified person? Because I think it would be like unique for a certified person to come to Enfield, right? Yeah.
I will tell you that in the Upper Valley, this is a very good department to work for. There are departments that a certified person who's familiar with the Upper Valley will not touch with a ten-foot pole. We are not. We are a good department to work for.
Yeah, no, I'm confident, confident that this person.
Great, where are they coming from? No, but like, north, south, east, west.
That's a person we should not acquire.
So you mentioned. You mentioned vacancy rates, and vacancy rates is one of the things I'd like to look at this year. We typically, our actual expenses come in about seven percent under our budgeted expenses. And I understand the rationale you educated me last year that we can't go a penny over. So we range from ten percent to four point five percent. We never budget for vacancies. I don't know what vacancy rate we typically run. I think it's probably somewhere in the five to seven percent annually. So I don't want to suggest that we should be budgeting for five or seven percent, but we should consider budgeting for some percentage thereof. It, you, you could do it by department, or you could just do it at the aggregate. And that would allow us to budget a little bit more accurately, which would put more money in our taxpayers' pockets throughout the year. So there's pros and cons to it, but I'd like to have the discussion.
I think the flip side of that is, you're budgeting for the people you think you're going to have. If you have a vacancy, and then you hire somebody who's a little bit higher level at a higher rate, that eats some of that. We have no way of projecting that, very.
So we can look at historically, what, what has happened in the last ten years? And we can look at what our budgeted headcount is, and budgeted dollars associated with that headcount. And then look at our actuals, and if we see that every year we're about ten percent over, we can take some percentage of that safely.
My, my concern with that approach is that then you can't be fully staffed for a full year. Because if you budget it, we'll just, whatever, ten percent below. If you're fully staffed all the way through December, suddenly you're ten percent over budget. And you don't have a budget to pay the staff that last month.
So you're ten percent over on headcount, but you're not necessarily ten percent over on total budget?
Personnel budget, which is your biggest.
Right, that's, that's, that's by far our biggest cost, being personnel, benefits, all that. And.
So if you haven't, I, I hear it.
My concern, I, 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 I'm definitely in favor of the approach where we budget for full staff, and we do everything we can to have that. With the understanding that, you know, there is turnover. Cause also when you have turnover, we do end up having larger costs associated with a new employee that goes in other parts of the budget that's not right on the personnel line, branding and whatnot. So I don't think it's quite as straightforward, and I think we'll set ourselves up for not being able to be full-staffed. Which is obviously our, our goal and should be our goal.
So Eric, if in the last ten years, you've never been fully staffed, and you always run at a ten percent vacancy rate, would you be willing to assume some risk and put in a four percent vacancy rate?
So I think that's part of where, the way government budgeting works, where we can't go over. It's not like a business. We can't go and take out any loans. We have to stick within the budget. So no, I don't think that from a personnel side, no, I don't think that's a risk I'd wanna take, because the cost is, if we do reach that scenario, we have to lay someone off.
But let, let me make sure, maybe I don't understand well enough, but is your, you can't go over, is that by line item? Or is that in totality?
It, it's in totality. But again, so we're thinking through scenarios, you know. You're fully staffed, so you're ten percent over there, we have a big Christmas storm. That's right at the end of the year, we don't have any cash, we don't have anything in our budget, suddenly we can't plow that year. It's like that, sorry, that storm.
I hear what you're saying, but I don't think it's a realistic scenario, given that we're, on average, we're several percent of our actuals every year. We're, we're seven percent under every year, which is hundreds of thousands of dollars. I think.
Also, we have that target, remember, where we are supposed to be targeting a percentage that goes into undesigned needed. And so right now, we're at the very low end of that range. And so I would be very uncomfortable, because some of that money that get us to the mid, midway point of what's recommended by DRA, which is Department of Revenue Administration, is that a lot of times that money comes from the sal, the majority of it comes from the salary line. And that, that would make me really, really nervous. I think what happens when you get nervous about salaries is that you start doing things like telling people, don't go to training. Don't order the next set of books. We've been down this road before, many, many times.
Last year, we did that.
Yeah.
So we've been down the road of considering having a vacancy line in our budget? Or we've been down the road of we had an issue with electronic loss of phones, and then we have to cancel training?
Well, we slowed down like training and that sort of thing.
Those activities in, when you're making hard decisions about how to make sure that our bottom line flushes out and we don't go over. That's where we start looking, and that's when we get into some trouble, because you get behind the training.
But that's managing it out.
Yeah, yes, managing it out is like, yes.
I, I'm all in favor of managing it out, but shouldn't we be managing it in as well? Where we see historic trends, and we can take those in consideration in an effort to have a more, to keep money in people's pockets.
So what if we were to manage that in, like you were saying, and then manage and allowing to make sure that we're putting another designation needed? Do we have a line to manage and don't designate it? Because that's what the trade off is. I, I see, I think that there's no point at the end of the day, because you're just making another line in the budget, and it washes, but.
I think you're making an assumption that I'm not sure it's true. So we have vacancies, but the reason for those vacancies varies year to year. And so some of that is, for instance, Chief Holland's told us last year, I'm not gonna hire somebody that I don't think's gonna work out. Right? All right, so he's waiting. We have a vacancy, not because, you know, we need that vacancy or we're trying to save money. But we're trying to get the best employee we can for that position, somebody that will come here and stay. And that will kind of be on the same page as our other employees and the philosophy of the department. And I think that happens most often, from my point of view, in the police department. Which we know is hard to hire for. And, and then there's, there's other ones, you know, highway departments, you've had vacancies. But we also know that it's hard to get good employees. That's why people are calling and people that already have jobs and trying to take them away. So I think a lot of those vacancies aren't because we aren't filling them to save money. It's because we don't have the right employee at the right time. And, you know, orchestrating, getting on on board, okay?
A lot of what you, you're looking at there over the last few years is because we've had some problems. And I think we've been trying to solve some of those problems. So that the vacancy rate, hopefully, will be non-existent. It's not reasonable, but, but it'll be much less than.
So I think, I think there has been some, what should we call it, don't ask, don't tell. Because we had to fill up, we were working out of the hole, right? Just like, just like the sewer fund was in the hole, the designated fund was in the hole by what?
Six hundred thousand, seven.
Yeah, it was close to a million, right?
It was a lot.
It was close to a million in the hole, so we had to fill that back up, right? I agree, I think people can't lie with the numbers that we have a lot going to undesignate every year. There were years where it was a half a million dollars, right? Even last year, where we had to issue the payment, was it last year or this year? Last year, we issued a payment, we still had a bunch of money going to undesignated.
But we didn't know it was going.
Yes, and so here's, here's the point, right? So, you know, people tighten the belt, because we thought we were gonna run short, and then we actually still underran by several hundred thousand dollars.
I would say that, if I'm gonna, some of those open positions last year would be unfair to put that, because we purposely said you're not gonna hire, because we overspent here.
Right, but at the end of the day, you still underspent by several percent.
Yeah, we, we cut everything.
I know, and so, and so I, I honestly agree with.
I know. And so and so I I honestly agree with both Dan and Kate. One, we're gonna have vacancies. Yes, they're unpredictable, but it's not reasonable to expect you to be fully staffed every single month of year for every year. Two, yes, we need to be underrunning a little bit because we have to add money to the undesigned fund to escape, keep up with that percentage rule, right? Just pure inflation alone, you have to keep putting money in your savings, otherwise your savings are going down. In my mind, and I have been troubled with it too. Like in my head, if I had my whole budget, I would put my labor lower because I know I'm not gonna be fully staffed. And I would have a line item that says, put money into savings account, which is the undesigned fund. I I don't really care which way we go, but that is kind of what we've been doing without really saying it. But that's what we're doing.
Does D R A allow that?
That and that is my question. I don't really know if D R A even allows that.
I wish they would, but on the flip side, I mean, we'd have to have authority to be able to take that and move it here or move it there. And I think that almost makes it worse. I think you've, I agree with Kate here. I think you fund the positions because not only are they there, but yes, we can move them from line to line. But I can already see the department heads panicking when their personnel line is going to go over. Even if I say I can move a little from here to there, they don't see it that way. And so where are you going to take it from? But I do think we need to really watch it and say, how much should we be putting away out here in fund balance?
Because.
We're on the bottom end. I think we should be in that three hundred thousand dollar that's folding into fund every year.
Right, but I would say that six, five to seven hundred thousand dollar numbers are just not, that that's too much. And there's been years where it was five to seven hundred thousand dollars.
But what would be an appropriate percentage? Because we know we can't go over. Right, so we know we have to just responsible budgeting, sort of under shield, but what would be an acceptable, what would be sort of a target percentage perhaps?
One third of the average over the past ten years.
I'm gonna disagree with that because if you look back within the last ten years, we had circumstances that we don't want to be the norm. I'll just, we can talk more about it later, but I'll just say that.
D R A recommends eight to sixteen.
No, no, no. I'm not, I'm talking about in an individual year. We have a budget of nine and a half million. What percentage of that would be an appropriate amount to be rolling into?
I was I was answering a different question.
But so that's my question.
Before I answer, what is our current undesigned fund balance?
As of twenty twenty three.
And then, yeah, we also had those vacancy rates from seven years ago, I don't think.
We don't want to be full.
I think those were different circumstances also.
Once he has a number, I'll tell you what I think. Again, it's in my laptop at home. She started bringing it.
Looked it up today. I just don't want to say the wrong one.
A lot of it was covered by the chief.
While we're waiting for that, I was going to ask a question, um just in terms of process for upcoming deliberations. Um and that is that as we go through the process of budgeting for each department that we uh because of, in part because of the um S B two um default budget comparisons that we're that we're looking at compared to our budget proposal. Is that we go department by department, have departmental and and cumulative both percentage and and dollar figures comparison to the default and and the current budget.
I think that's fair.
In advance.
Yeah, like as part of the budget presentation, say.
Each me, yeah.
If if we have a default budget, what would that department's budget be under those rules?
And how much difference is there?
Good idea.
I agree.
And I think that's really helpful, um because in, we had a year in which there was a ma- major mistake, this is many years ago. Our prior in which there was about sixty thousand dollars that they realized they had made a mistake and I think double entered some revenue. And they decided at the end D P W was last, so they just took it out of D P W's budget. And not very popular, but I stood up and asked to put it back in, right? Because I asked Jim, what what is sixty thousand dollars doing? That turns out it's the side of the road, you know, the part that makes our road stay a road. Um you know, when they put the gravel down the side, it's things like that. It's the crack maintenance. It's the things that and so, but that was a major shock, right? So when people look at a difference of, say, sixty thousand dollars, like what would it do this year? The percentage will tell you one story and the narrative will tell you another. And I think that's important so that people can make a really good decision because that was a, when they told me that was, I was like, hi, I I can't support that. I don't want to pay to repave this road early.
One million nine hundred twenty seven thousand one hundred five dollars. Twenty three undesigned balance, that's the twenty three undesigned balance. And do we have the projection for twenty four? One million nine twenty seven one oh five.
Remember, each year we're supposed to go up ever because it's a percentage of the total budget. Um and it includes the school, just our school district portion. It's the whole.
We have a, we have a formula that we can put together of what it should be based on the.
Do we have a projection of twenty four?
I don't have it with me. We can look up what.
To go over twenty twenty five.
And do we, uh in twenty twenty three, do we know what percentage we were at?
No, I'd have to do the calculation.
It was on your slide.
I know it was. It was in the low end, right?
It was at the low end. It was in the range, but it was at the low end.
What was and what is our low end?
Too many conversations. I can't listen to ten people at once. I'm sorry, where were we?
They're just trying to figure out where we were in twenty twenty.
Right, I have a question. I just wanted to make sure and Dimitri also asked, did you get, do you have a suggestion for the committee meetings? And I think a lot of people agree with it. Did you repeat your suggestion?
Suggestion was that uh for each meeting that we have in advance um a departmental and cumulative uh both dollar and percentage uh compared to uh the twenty twenty four and the and the default budget.
Essentially, when they present their budget for the year, that we also know if we had a default budget, under the default budget rules, what would that department's budget be? Makes sense?
Get the budgets done, I will put the default budget line.
Each me, each me, for each department.
Yeah, but.
You'll have it. When we give you the department budgets, it'll have it on there.
Okay, even better. It'll be line by line.
I mean, we can look at putting percentages. I may need to talk to you guys about what you're just looking at giving, but I would also, I think it was highly recommended to stay away from percentages and I would agree with that because you often get yourself in trouble playing.
So if we were in the middle, which we're not, it would have to go up by a hundred thousand dollars a year.
So a hundred thousand uh nine, it was sorry, nine point five?
Six, the general operating fund is about six and a half? Yeah, you have to include, you have to include the school budget as well.
Oh, you're just handling our portion, yes.
So that's one and a half percent.
Right, which is.
I I will, I will say that's, uh that's so tight that I'm, I think you do run the risk of it's getting into a situation where
It goes.
It's a really, really small margin of error. It's a single road washes out. And we have to pay for it before we get reimbursed and we're over budget for the year.
And the goal, we don't want to be borrowing. We want to want to be doing tax anticipation note because we have no cash flow because we had to pay, you know, for an emergency expense. I think it's, this is the only, continuing to use our undesigned fund balance um and and to track it to the policy is is really.
And so.
We're more talking about how much. And that comes out of the six and a half million amount of the total budget and.
And so.
So I think, anyway, that that's my point. It's one and a half percent and really tight. I don't think we can manage to that level.
No growth streak falls in the river, that'll eat it up.
That's probably less than inflation for the year. So I think that that's a really well, well slim margin.
So the the plan we came up with, the plan we, the plan we were kind of executing to was, you know, so, yes, there's nobody on, but people don't listen to it. Yeah, yes, we are, we are putting more money into the undesigned fund than what we would like and yes, it could be viewed as taxing that we don't really should. We, the goal is to essentially manage that through the undesigned fund balance. And then actually use, if we have over collected, use that money to then in future years, lower the taxes by spending it. No, rephrase. Let me, let me, let me correct it. Now, I don't want to use the money to just lower the tax rate. I want to lower the money. I want to use the money to say, hey, we have to do this one time thing. Let's use the savings account for it and not collect taxes. And so what you're essentially doing is, you're essentially saying, I don't know how much my rent is going to be every year. Right? I'm gonna put extra money into my savings account for the rent. And you do that. And suddenly you find your savings account is high enough, right? And you go like, oh, I need a new computer. I'm gonna use money from my savings account to buy the computers. Because you're afraid if you don't put enough money in your savings account, you won't be able to pay a rent. And it's kind of the same. And so the idea is more, yes, we would be over budgeting a little bit. But with a lag of less than one year, we are wisely spending that money on things we were going to do anyway. Makes sense?
It's like a rainy day fund.
It's essentially like a rainy day fund. And the problem is, is that, like I said, you know, three hundred thousand dollars seems like a lot. That you overrun it, like that you not spend every year, but three hundred thousand dollars out of six million. That's like a couple of percent. And if I had to manage my project within a couple of percent, I would say I can't do that.
And say it's probably not like a laptop in your home. That would be like when you lose all your teeth unexpectedly, right? Let's say our policy is geared towards and the state requires it to be a major catastrophe.
Right, but when we use undesigned fund and we vote like last year, we didn't vote on it because the trend was the the undesigned fund is going too low. We should not be using the money. Right? So we went like, hey, we've used so much of it the year before because we were concerned about taxes going up and I voted against it.
I have regrets.
Thank you. And so the years before we actually had, you know, we had, oh, hey, the undesigned fund is going up a lot. Let's use some of the money for one time things and examples of that was Shet Street. Right? And so we're gonna do Shet Street anyway. And so rather than funding Shet Street out of the taxes for the year, we funded stress sheet out of the extra taxes we collected the year before. And so that's how I have come to peace with the fact that, hey, we're over collecting. But then the key thing you have to then do is you have to make sure you use the money from the undesigned fund for stuff you really need. And not consider it your flush fund for your pet projects.
And shouldn't it be um a clear line item of what, which which way it's going in the budget? Um rather, rather than just, um you know, where it happens to end up with all the um ups and downs um through the year.
Yeah, but I think that that's the whole point. You can't manage your budget to within, you, like if you were given a six million dollar budget, right? And you're like, you have to live on every single line item to your budget. Exactly, it's not workable. And so having line item that says you shall put so much in your shush fund doesn't work because you can't manage to within one point five percent of six and a half million. And so the money that they end up, they're gonna, they're gonna underrun every year. They're not legally allowed to over. They're gonna underrun every year, right? We actually have to applaud them for not doing what I know other people in government do, which is make sure it's all spent. Right? And so I'd rather award the fact that they are underrunning, putting the money in the undesigned funds and then make sure that we we manage what that money is being used for, for things that really are appropriate. And what I mean by appropriate is one time expenses, no writing down the tax rate, no funding salaries out of it, one time expenses so that when there's a year where you can't do it, it doesn't hurt you in the taxes. What's our acceptable range for the undesigned funds? Eight to.
Twelve and a half.
We want to be in twelve.
Eight to seventeen, okay, yeah. Twelve being the target.
Twelve is the target. It's eight to seventeen, we're at. We're at about nine.
Yeah, I have a policy up right now.
So we're essentially low in our savings.
Done pretty well. Very velvet.
I I mean, in the state, if we get into a disaster, the state of New Hampshire right now is absolutely not coming to save us. Or the feds, right? Like, no, but there's nothing. Um you know, they're busted on their tenure, so I think it's you need to be extra cognizant, like we may very well not be getting much in from room and meals. Um you know, they think it's adorable. They lowered the road tool. I'm like, great, you lowered the road tool and and they're giving Enfield the ax on all of our tenure projects, basically. So, you know, this is very serious. We're losing, you know, we're gonna lose part of Dry Ridge Hill eventually. It's falling down if you guys haven't seen it.
We're gonna what?
Dry Ridge Hill is slowly caving in too and that was on the tenure, but they they just axed it.
They did?
D O T pretty much axed. What they do is D O T is gonna serve it up to the executive council and make them look like the pet guys, right? So, you know, we are in a position where when some of these things happen, we've got no one there behind us.
And New Hampshire right now is in in dire streets and it's gonna get worse. I know I sound like a pessimist.
No, you're not a pessimist. We gotta be realistic about this and we we have the ability to be pretty moderate here and to control it. And I think, you know, I just, there's there's no safety net under us, I guess, it's like.
One weather event can do me well, I mean, you know.
Yes, so I, all that said, seven hundred thousand is too much, right? And so if we're underrunning seven hundred thousand, there has to be a good reason. And the answer may be fine. We lost a whole bunch of police officers that we didn't plan, but you know, it it happened several years in a row. I was looking the other way because it was we were like at zero percent and one percent and three percent. But I think now we have to keep it in in the three hundred thousand dollar range. And if it is three hundred thousand dollars, we're probably not gonna want to spend much of it because we're at eight, we're at nine percentish and we need to get to twelve. And but, so that that money sitting in a cap somewhere, right? So that's, see, that's the thing I don't understand. So there's.
Oh, it's definitely sitting in an account. It's just not in one that is probably bearing interest the way you want.
Right, but it's gotta be money somewhere, right?
Yeah, it's in the bank.
Oh, yes and no.
Why, why, why no?
It's really convoluted, but it's.
The cycle of pay tax payments.
Cycle of tax payments, it just, it's when I first took over in Weatherfield, it was the same thing. Where is all this money? And it it just doesn't work that way in government.
That's, well, but that's why I was saying that cash flows like component in the portal, right? Because instead of taking, instead of sticking it into an investment vehicle and then having to go borrow tax anticipation note, we basically float ourselves on loan. Right? As part of our cash flow, so these, right? And because we get two. Right? As part of our cash flow. So, these, right? And because we get two tax payments a year.
Yeah.
And we also have payments that go out to the school district and to the county because we collect for them by law. And we get to do all that fun work, but that money isn't ours. So you have a lot of pe- moving pieces. I went through the same thing in the school district where I was like. Where is all of our money?
It's really, really confusing. I'll get some people in here, but it's.
Couple years.
It's, it's way different than anything you've ever seen.
And I don't mind a few meetings. I don't mind a few separate meetings for me to understand this. Cause I think it would actually be useful.
Yeah. And there's, there may be, um, folks out there that our accountants can point us to who are expert in. Municipal funds and investment strategies. Um, they could take a really complicated topic and simplify it for us and help us understand it. I'm not looking to invest in sports. Invest in sorties. I mean, I'm talking, you know. F D I G insured investment vehicles. Um, all right.
September eleventh.
All right.
But that one's a little different there. They're signed up for it, but it's.
Oh, good.
It's the municipal by any law.
We, anything else?
Meeting schedule?
Meeting schedule, yes. So. Are you in town on September eleventh?
Am I what? In town on September eleventh?
Yeah.
Cause he's not, I see. Just in case you didn't know where that was going.
Uh, I, you know what? September eleventh, I'm actually at the budget training course in Berlin.
Thinking to sign up for the twenty-fifth?
You're right, I said, I changed that. It's Manchester, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Are, are you in town on the eleventh? Because I am in Seattle.
Yes, I'm in town.
Okay, so, which means you're running the meeting and I'm gonna be online. In two weeks.
Online too, if I can get internet to.
I'm out of the country at the end of October.
So if you're online, do you count towards a quorum?
I, I do, but I don't care.
No, is it a quorum? Has to be physically in the room? So you have to have a forum in the room, but you can't vote.
But I can vote.
As long as you roll poll votes.
Yeah.
But you do have to have a forum in the room. You need to have five.
Two?
Yeah, we'll have five.
No, I didn't think you did. We just have an, uh, we have a, we have a select board alternate, so we have one. Which is comfortable.
Yeah, so our next meeting is gonna be the eleventh. I will be in line. He'll be here. And then our next meeting. Our next meeting after that is actually. Not the twenty-fifth. He's, he's written it a little different.
Yeah.
So it's September eleventh and then the next meeting is September twenty-fifth.
Oh, okay.
Is that correct?
Yeah.
Yes.
And then some of us are on C I P and those meetings are the fifteenth and the twenty-ninth.
The main ones I really wanted to kinda talk about and highlight. If we continue with this schedule. Um, November twentieth actually overlaps the Citizens Academy Day. And on the Citizens Academy.
Okay.
And then the next month, December eighteenth is, but I did put on the first line, if you see above that eleventh or fourth. If we wanna get away from that December eighteenth day, which. We were planning graduation, so that would be, I would be going and maybe some of us like for it, but. Um, if we did like the fourth and eleventh, we could get done before then. It would give us a little longer break over the holiday timeframe, but I would be okay with doing those two back to back. We're doing, we're kind of in the budget review time. It might make sense to be coming back a little more often so we're not forgetting what we talked about last week, but.
Yeah.
That would be up to the.
Would, would you condense what you just said? When, when are we meeting?
You guys, you guys need to decide that.
Sit here.
But I'm asking, I think it would be best if we met the fourth and the eleventh.
And it's.
And the eleven.
Fourth and the eleven and.
And then the eighteenth.
Scrap the eighteen.
Okay.
Fourth and the eleventh of December. So the meetings would be September eleventh.
Yep.
September twenty-fifth.
Yeah.
October ninth.
Yeah.
October twenty-third, November thirteenth, November twentieth, December fourth and December eleventh.
Right. And we're meeting at six thirty?
Six thirty. Are they gonna continue to be here or are they gonna be?
We can have that discussion next. So here's the thing, I, I actually think, and not that we wanna move back and forth, but I think the budget presentations. We could do it here. I think they'd work well downtown too when they're presenting to you. Um, the thing about downtown when you meet there is it's set up to be a lot more formal. So the budget committee would be in one long straight line, looking at someone at the podium talking. If you guys wanna have a working session like this, it really just doesn't work as well down there. Um, and I think we start looking at that as a town moving forward, that select board meetings. Hearings for the planning board, zoning board, those would work wonderful downtown. Keep some structure, do that. If we want working meetings, places like this work good. You haven't been in there yet, but the E O C has a nice big room too, but that one's set up a little bit more for. Almost like training lecture type stuff. So if we have a presentation or something, it would work really good.
At the public safety building up and to that.
Yeah, public safety building. The E O C is the emergency operations center inside your public safety building.
I was like, why would we be meeting?
But anyway, we can have a decision, the budget committee can make that decision. We can meet here every time and the department head. Sit here and present to you like we did, or if, if you wanna meet at Whitney Hall, we can do more of that presentation style. The one thing we do have there is the whole stage wall. Is a screen, so we could have a massive spreadsheet up there for people to see.
Yeah, but not, not for the budget committee because you'd be doing this.
No.
Huge TV in front of you as well.
You can sit on the other side of the table too.
If the middle stands, it's easy to turn and look at the, the wall.
See it, I'll show you.
But. Yeah, yeah, there was a screen right from.
And it's just like a college classroom.
I know.
Look on this or you look on that.
Wait, no, I didn't see that. Was that there?
The big, the big screen right in front of you.
Yeah, so every time I. It, it wasn't being used though.
Oh, no, guys.
But.
Are the, are the tables there on rollers so that they can be moved? So you could do, I mean.
The tables?
Yeah.
It would be difficult because they're all hooked together and wired together with microphones.
Like, hooking wires might not.
They can be taken apart, but it would take probably twenty, thirty minutes to take them apart, move them around, then you'd have to put them back.
I would suggest that if you were going to use it, right, like in a college classroom with like seventy to two hundred people, like. You learn to take turns and go to the microphone. So it is possible, but if you like the collaborative, like look at your neighbors, like feel good about it. So like, I'm gonna be mean and say that I don't care because I'm from the generation that they set us up and rose with hundreds of people and. Put our money and they made us do it anyway. Right, but I mean, so it doesn't matter to me one way or another, but I think we have to be cognizant that a lot of people. Grew up sitting around tables and it is more comfortable for them. So I, I talked to add about it, um, at length.
I would say these discussions we had tonight are a lot better here. And like I said, when the department heads come to present to you.
Yeah.
Yep.
I think it would work great there, but if we wanna move back and.
I, I just assume not move back and forth. I rather like it here. I think we should meet here.
So what, so we should meet here.
Yep.
Your public hearings should go there.
So, yes.
Public hearing over there.
Right, public hearing over there. So we're gonna have a public hearing and a deliberative session, right? Yeah.
Deliberate.
I thought there's supposed to be two deliberative sessions.
The school district gets one, we get one. You can practice. They have their earlier dinners.
Good deal. Okay, so we'll do, we'll do the meetings here.
Yeah.
But we'll have the public hearing or here, you know, so we'll do two meetings there. Actually. Um, we'll do the, we'll do the public hearing there and we'll do the budget presentation to the select board there. Actually, but that's a select board meeting. And it will be there, perfect. And so that select board. Is that on the fifteenth? Yeah.
So I'm going to assume that somebody knowledgeable will be sending out a schedule to us.
Yeah.
With dates and times and location.
I miss.
It's a short drive to Parkmont, I sent you.
John and I have to drive further now sometimes, you know?
Get your attendance by email online.
Any other business? Any other business?
I make the most.
I second, meeting adjourned.
Second?
Yes, second adjourned.
Aye.
Aye.
Not debatable.